Well, some of us just come and go when rest of us are here. I know, I came down twice to find you, that's what they said. Well, you keep it.
Turn your phone off. I better turn mine off in case there. Nope. Wait for Debbie. Okay, we're ready? Debbie, you ready? Ready. Okay, well, go ahead and call the, uh, what's the date? August 10th, 2022 Commissioners Meeting to Order, if you would stand for the pledge and a prayer.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to watch over our country, Lord, and watch over our county. We ask that this meeting be conducted in accordance with your will, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Have the commissioners had the opportunity to review the claims?
Make a motion, we accept the claims as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Same way with report or payroll. Have you guys had an opportunity, I have, to review payroll?
Make a motion, we approve payroll as presented.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. We have three reports, the Henry County Coroner's Monthly Report, and we have Sheriff's Midyear Commissary Report. Sheriff, if you want to make any comment on the commissary report.
Okay.
And the IDM Monthly Report. We have, on the IDM Monthly Report, there is, it's a permanent application for the 20th Street Lift Station replacement. They're just going to take place. Do I have a motion to accept the reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. So we have a claim for the food and beverage for Middletown. We received a letter that the invoice was to be paid out for $9,456.40, but I believe the project was only awarded $7,565. Kayla was going to reach out to them and see if their 20% match, but I don't have anything updated on that. Can we, could we modify this, Joel, and just approve what was, what was originally? So the original award was $7,565 to be paid for the roadside marker for their historic district. So do I have a motion to accept the claim for $7,565 versus the $9,456.40?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Penny?
So, this is Make My Move paperwork. So the first page, there are four different documents in here. The first page is an executive summary that just tells the details about the program which we've gone through, and I know Bobby, you were able to be at a meeting with us, and so this was a result and an outcome that we got from that meeting.
Okay.
So that first is the executive summary. So these will be executed probably within the next month by city and county. So, you know, the instructions are, there's an executive order, those paperwork, that paperwork stapled together, there's a resolution, and then the worker incentive agreement. And so those need to be fine tuned to city and county. And so we'll be back to talk about those further and figure out if there's any questions or any details that anyone, you know, needs further clarification on. So this is just the beginning steps of Make My Move as far as paperwork goes. So we had a meeting the other day with their folks. There were, I don't know, three or four online with a Zoom meeting and four, three or four in person. You know, we've made our first installment and we're moving. So, anyway, this isn't anything, as I said, to act on, just things for you to read. If there's any questions, you can send and ask us. We can either figure out if we can answer them or forward them on to the Make My Move folks, so.
It was a very productive two hours.
Yeah, it was, exactly, you can speak to it, however.
Yeah, it was, it was a very productive two hours. It was a lot of them just gathering information about Henry County and what people like about Henry County. And they're going to be setting up multiple meetings with various stakeholders, if you want to call them stakeholders. And it looks like that their plan is for it to move very quickly, like within six, seven weeks.
Right, so we've already had emails shoot back and forth with photos and, and if there's anyone that wants to volunteer to be a Make My Move, it's kind of the welcome wagon, honestly, for many of us to think about, people to talk to people, tell them what's cool here, be on videos, and then, then it's a online presence that Make My Move creates for us and to advertise our community. And so if anybody thinks they've got a great story to tell, are comfortable on video, you know, I encourage you, you can email us, call us, whatever, and we'd like to plug in people in the community that have great things to tell. And it may be some department heads that are asked to, you know, tell us about the park or tell us about Hoosier Gym or places like that that are interesting.
And it's countywide, it's not just people who live here in the city, it's countywide, so.
Right, so it's funded by Henry County and the City of Newcastle. And then this paperwork also, Corey mentioned, I hadn't even have a chance to read through it, I found it when I text you, like to figure out a longer term plan if we want to think about funding it after other funds are depleted. So we have some help through the state of Indiana. And so they're a part of that, and it's an initiative to get people back here to our community that are remote workers and/or workers that are moving from out of state. There you go.
Do you think that participating in a video would lead to other opportunities in show business?
I would say probably for you, there's a chance. I'll make a note to somebody about that too, okay? I'll put it at the top.
Thank you.
I think Cecil B. Demille is dead. Okay, Shonda is not here, Scott and Carrie is not here. Joe, you have anything?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The only thing I have today is, it's that time to put down pavement markings on the roads where they need them. And I've been evaluating, I contacted the company that did it last year, we quoted it. We had two quotes, and the low quote from last year said he would hold his price for this year. So with inflation the way it is, I thought that's a pretty good deal. His price last year was, with the bid with the number of feet per foot, it was $36,016.49. I had contacted Joel about a contract or something to make that happen, so, but he's, he's willing to do it, so I, he's already working, he's doing the thermoplastic for the Dublin Pike project for E and B, so he's, he's already working in the county, so.
And what's the name of the company?
Accurate Striping Incorporated, out of Yorktown.
And what was the other quote?
The other quote was from a company in Indianapolis, and it was over $200,000 last year.
That's right, I do remember that.
Yeah, it was extremely high because they couldn't get paint.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the striping quote from Accurate Striping in a total amount of $36,016.49? And I'm going to add to that and have Joel work on the contract agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Dellinger, second by Ed Tarantino, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. The only other thing that I brought is we, Kenan and I participated in the Department of Transportation. They had a Q and A regarding the projects that's going to go from I-70 up to Sheri Lynn.
Yes.
Next year, April.
I've been in contact with the design engineer. And they're going to put a left turn lane at 300 South there at Walmart.
Yeah, 300, so we'll have a left turn and a straight, a straight right.
Straight right and then a left, yeah.
I know there was, some have asked, what can we do, and I'm going to left, straight, right, but there's, they'd have to go into the easements where all the power lines. As my understanding, that's not wide enough.
Yeah, it's not wide enough, they'd have to reconstruct that shoulder area, and I don't think that's a part of the project. If we get rid of the lefts, I, I think it may help quite considerably get those vehicles moving, so.
Well, I will tell you as an example, because I very rarely come up 300 South and turn left, I always turn right. I was coming west on 300 South and was going to turn left, and I almost went into oncoming tra, you know. It was one of those, it's like, no, I need to go, and I was like, oh, wait a minute, this is a double line. So it's easily, it's easily, you think that there's a left turn lane there.
Right, I mean, it lines up with the, across the street for the eastbound traffic, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Coroner's not here, Health Department's not here. Steve, do you have anything? Tom, do you have anything? Sheriff McQuarrel. Okay, and we've got that later on, later on in the, Debbie, do you have anything? Jenny's not here. Rita, Casey, and Steve for the park. Do you have, you don't have an extra copy for Joel? Oh, you've reviewed it, okay.
So that is two separate contracts for FPBH that we, the civil or the engineering company that we have been talking to. One is going to be the utility and water infrastructure, and then the other one is a shelter house. And that's the quote to kind of get everything planned out. Joel has already reviewed it, Nathan sent it to him, so we're just coming to you.
I have two, I have two, is there two, there are two different ones, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one's for the shelter house, one's for the utilities.
All right. Have you had an opportunity to review this, first time you're seeing it? First time you're seeing it? Okay. Joel, do you have any comments or anything?
It's been a week or so probably since I've looked at it, but I mean, it was like a standard form contract for an engineering firm that we've hired, so from a legal perspective, I didn't see anything. Was atypical in these, either of these agreements.
I'm not against doing this, but I personally would like to review both of these before, before moving forward with this. I don't know about the other commissioners, their opinions on this. Do you have an opinion, Steve?
I have a lot of opinions, but people don't want to hear them most of the time.
I am very much in support of hiring professionals to figure out what we need to do with the water and electricity and whatnot and the shelter. But since this is the first time I saw it, I would like probably to
Absolutely.
Wait till the next meeting before we act on this. I would have one, how did you decide to pick FPBH?
Well, I Googled engineering firms around here, and we had a one-on-one meeting with the company before. I talked to them on the phone a little bit, and then before I brought them to the board. And then when I, he came to a board meeting, and we also had a sit-down meeting with them. FPBH has also done some work for the county, I believe, as well. So that's how.
So I think they have an office here.
Yeah, yeah.
That was, say, the one sit-down meeting, though it would be somewhat of local because they have a presence here in the county.
Yep.
So were you making that in form of a motion?
I will make a motion that we table this until our next meeting.
Second.
Motion by, who are you? Ed Tarantino to table, second by Steve Dellinger, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero.
Awesome, thank you.
FBPH? Or FPBH, sorry, did I have that backwards? Sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, Jody's not here, Ways and Measures, Henry County EMS is not here. Bill, do you have anything? Okay, so we will move forward. So we have ARA grant claims, this is for the Henry County Owner Occupied Program that we have been doing and working with ARA in this process. I know, Joel, you have had an opportunity to review this. I believe it's in the amount of 14,000, there's one for $14,495 and one for $10,360. Or unless I missed one. Yeah, there are, I was just looking at the invoices. There are construction fees, professional fees, these are for one, two, I think it's just two properties? Yeah, yeah, it's just two, yeah, two properties here in the city. One on South 11th Street and one on Bundy Avenue. So do I have a motion to accept this and make this, accept this claim and pay these balances that are due?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Heather, come on down.
You have to forgive me, I'm new to this.
You're perfectly fine. Just make sure you speak into the microphone.
I'm sure you are aware, we've
Pull your microphone closer and make, yeah. Is it not on?
It's
Okay.
It's green.
Yeah.
I'm sure you are aware, we've called you a couple times about our road. I'm going to take you to a personal level.
I, I need you to really speak into the microphone.
I'm going to take you to a personal level. Sure. I myself am an autoimmune, I have several health issues, and now I have a partial amputation. My mobility is a big issue. The school buses, we have three that travel our road, three. The school bus has refused to pick up my kids, I have four. One was born without a kidney, one has asthma. As far out as they're making him walk to meet the stop sign, there's not a shelter. Daylight savings time, it's been dark, there's traffic through there, and I've, I've tried to be there since school has started, but because of my issues, I physically cannot be there to protect my kids. I have put up a map, does the name Mick McGee ring a bell?
Who?
Mick McGee. Because, I drew a little map, I'm not an artist, this is 40. Mick McGee lived over in this house. Was all of this territory put in privately?
Pardon me?
Was all of this addition put in privately?
I would have to pull the plat maps.
He knew somebody because he got this road that affected him fixed.
That was prior to, I have no knowledge of, of any of that.
Are you aware of the Indiana Code for a privately owned road?
Joe, would you like to? Joe is our Highway Superintendent Engineer. And if you, if you want, we'll move, if you want to come here and we'll, to make it easier, it doesn't matter.
I'll share.
Oh, that's all right. You're talking about whether it's private or whether it's a public street. We have access to N dot certified mileage online. They have a map, and it shows all the certified miles. In other words, certified miles means that's what we are getting tax dollars for. If it's not marked on that map, we are not getting tax dollars for it. So when someone calls in about a road and we're unsure, we go to that map to look it up. And if it's not shown as a public road, we do not take care of it. We do not maintain it. And, and there's several. This is, this is not just Henry County, but there's a lot of other counties that have the same situation. There may be small towns that are unincorporated that have roads, but they're not, they're private, they've never been added to that mileage with the state.
New Lisbon would be an example if they had, since it's an unincorporated town.
Right. Some, some streets are, but like alleys, they're not.
Do, do those private roads have access to a public boat ramp or lake?
I don't think so.
We have trucks and trailers and boats and everybody coming down to use the boat ramp for Blue River. I live right here. Right here's the boat ramp, it, it's literally my neighbor, and then there's the boat ramp. And then there's another house, and then the stop sign right in front of my house. Right here. Everybody's coming down here tearing up the road. We've had R E M C out digging to bury the power lines, the road is corroding. My, my yard now floods because they have dug the power lines underground. And again, I'm a health patient. I've had in-home health care several times because of the bone disease that I have. My bones are deteriorating. I am being denied in-home health care because of the shape of this road. And now that my kids are affected, they're having to walk out there. I can't be there to protect them. Over the summer, we have had, somebody hit our mailboxes. And I don't mean they just whacked them and made them bend over, it took out the posts. And I guarantee it was because they were avoiding hitting those potholes. I was going back to the code of the privately owned, the Indiana Code. Sorry. You have to have, it means by the section of 913 to 49. You have to, means a way or place in private ownership that is used for vehicular travel by the owner and those having express or implied permission from the owner, but not by other persons. Where the boat ramp. Do they have permission from the owner to use it?
That I don't know, it is not county-owned. We don't own the boat ramp and
My own, my own neighbor has been here when the road was put in. She never asked permission. I've been in this place for 12 years.
I, I understand, the county does not own that boat ramp.
Right.
To my knowledge.
It's Blue River. It's Blue River.
Conservancy. Yeah, I mean, but, but Henry County doesn't own that boat ramp.
Now, we have all banded together, we've put, put in, and we've done major maintenance. We can't do it anymore. I'm pinched to my pennies. And like I said, I'm trying to level with you.
Sure.
Be humble, you have kids? I, I, I mean, I'm a nobody, I don't know any of you, you don't know me. Would you want to be in my position? Being denied in-home health care because they can't get to me because the shape of this road? We've had house fires out there in the beginning of the territory. Imagine if they were back by me? Imagine if it was my house? Would I be safe? Would I be able to call 911 and have the guarantee that somebody's going to come and help me? Because of the shape of this road, I've been refused. I have been lucky to have a great support system with my parents being able to get me to the hospital when need be, I just got through spending a week in there. If I had to call an ambulance, I would have been there two, three days waiting on it to get to me. And this is sad. I'm humble, I'm coming to you begging you to help me protect my kids because now they're in a spot, it's dangerous. There's people flying around the bend that you can't see until you're right on them, even though that is a stop sign. There's people leaving for work in the morning, it gets pitch black, how are they going to see my kids? You know, I'm begging you to help me figure out how to fix this. How do we annex this road? How do we get it cleared?
Joel, or Joe, would you like to speak to that?
When, when a developer comes in to develop a subdivision, whether it be industrial, commercial, or residential, they, they put in the roads if they, and, and usually they want the roads taken in by the county. And there's a subdivision control ordinance that dictates what has to be installed for the road for each type of activity. And it costs a, a, a good deal of money to put those in, especially today with asphalt prices. Usually it's curb and gutter. You have to, to put in a, a good base with stone and asphalt. So, and then once it's done, then it has to be accepted and inspected, of course, during the construction. And then, there's a plat put together. And that plat usually has to come before the commissioners for acceptance of that road. I've always been told that just because the road is on a plat, doesn't necessarily mean it belongs to the county because the Board of Commissioners have to accept it. Is that right, Joel? And, and there's, there's several out here that, that, that have been platted, that no one ever came before the board to get them accepted.
Well, you've got one now.
And-
Well, but it has to meet, and it's my understanding, um, that we can't, and Joel, you can speak to this, and probably I should just let you speak to this. The road would have to meet certain specifications for us to take it in. Now, could the county give them a cost estimate of what it would take? And then an assessment would be made to each homeowner that is on that area over a timeframe to get it to that?
There's probably a way that-
Now, we have done ma- some maintenance. Even the bus driver that has drove my kids, he paid to have it fixed. And, again, I can't work, my health does not allow me to. I do not have the funds to be out more money on my vehicle. I mean, we've been paying for year, like I said, I've been there for twelve years. And the only road that has ever been fixed was because of Mick McGee.
I, I have no idea who he is or how that happened.
Well, he, he's passed now, but he knew who to talk to.
I, again, I, I don't know how that happened. I, I can't say what previous administrations have done, previous highway superintendents. I, I can't say to that-
I get you don't wanna adopt a road unless it's in better condition, 'cause ours is, ours is bad, there's a cliff. You're done. Like I said, I'm, I'm begging you to help, 'cause I, I can't do it.
The, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, but there's an ordinance that talks about taking in roads, subdivision control ordinance, and it has to meet certain criteria for that to happen.
And I'm, I'm, ours would not meet certain criteria, 'cause it's in that bad of shape.
My question is, is since it's a private road at this point in time, who is actually the owner of that property?
And we, we have been, uh, looking at that, uh, and actually, Linda, I'm sorry, I didn't get back with you to get that document, those documents, or if you found them yesterday. I know I've had Rachel been, has been looking for that, and we are looking for that.
I, I, if it were common area, it would, it would be probably harder to do. I've had a situation in another county where it was private, but it was a common area, and they wanted to upgrade the road and give it to the county. I worked up the numbers, but the problem was, the attorney at that time says that everyone had to agree to it because it was common area, and not everybody would agree for the payments.
And I think the county did something similar to that with Landmark State. Paid a portion of that the homeowner paid.
They were assessed.
They were assessed contribution, and I think that situation was a little unique, only because you had a developer who fronted most of the cost, and he helped to develop and sell several lots, and he paid for the whole period. I don't know, were you around when-
Yes.
When that happened?
Yes.
I believe that was a scenario, I believe there were, I don't know, fifteen or fewer neighbors, so it wasn't a huge number of property owners there.
Yeah, we were reimbursed for the cost, yes.
The county was reimbursed for the cost?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Patricia Paul.
Okay.
I'm here representing my mother.
Okay.
She lives on Erie Avenue.
Uh-huh.
My parents built their house over forty-seven years ago. Those roads have always been taken care of by the county. They've always either been chip and seal or paved. There's at least two of those photographs that I took. I believe you're in possession of those. You can tell that that's been paved at least twice, because there are holes, and you can see the pavement underneath. If it's a private road, why did the county put up street signs?
Oh, I can answer that. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, that we have an obligation because of E nine-one-one to, to guide ambulances and fire trucks to those locations. So, somebody has to put up road name signs so they know where, where to go. And so that's, that's why we do that.
I will tell you, I have called nine-one-one. I've had an ambulance on the way to my house. They refused to go down the road to get to me. I had to call my mom, who lives in Carthage, to come and pick me up. How bad does this road have to be? Somebody have to die? Can you guys live having four kids orphaned? Because that's what's gonna happen. They're out here at the stop sign waiting for a bus, they get hit? I'm out a child. And I don't even know if it's gonna ha- when it's gonna happen, I wouldn't know it had happened. When they hit our mailboxes, there was no noise, nothing, and that was in broad daylight. Imagine if that was a child. It's getting to be a huge safety issue, and because it is traveled all the time because of the boat ramp, we are getting torn up because of the trucks and trailers.
Have you contacted Blue River Conservancy regarding the-
They're saying it's in your guys' hands. 'Cause it's county road. They only own the ramp part.
Okay, so, I'm going to, I'm going to just make-
I'm begging help.
Joel, we're just gonna have to do more research. I mean, and, and I, I sympathize and I empathize. Absolutely, I do. But we still have to follow, um, certain guidelines to do things.
If you lived down my road-
I completely understand, I am not discounting anything that you have just said.
How long would you keep putting you off?
I am not trying to put you off.
That's what it feels like, 'cause it's been-
And I understand.
Say, there, there's forty-seven thousand, forty-eight thousand people in, in this county. And three-quarter of the people that live on most of the roads have the same issues, same complaint you do. We don't have the money to fix their roads either. So to take in more roads that we can't afford to fix is a big undertaking. And, so unless you're willing to pay a large assessment to bring in those roads, I don't know how we can just justify spending money just on your road alone and let everybody else's roads go because we can't afford to fix those right now. No one's saying that your road's not entitled, but if it's not on the county inventory, it technically is not the county's responsibility. Most subdivisions have HOAs that take care of their roads, so-
So how do we go about getting it on the county? Give me answers, don't give me a wait.
Those were the criteria things, and if you don't meet those, then it's gonna be even harder for us to bring those roads in unless you're willing to pay to get those roads upgraded to that point. And that's why we wanna know-
There would have to be an estimate, a cost estimate, that would be assessed of, of the property owners on that road that would be, I mean, would be paid over a period of five, whatever years it would be, to, to reimburse the county for that work. We just can't take every private road and say, it would be like them, me saying my driveways, and please, I'm not minimizing anything, but it would be like me saying, my driveway needs to be paved, it's private, and have Joe come out and pave my driveway. Because it's a private road, I, I empathize and I sympathize, but there are procedures that we have to follow in order for this, which is why I am suggesting that we have Joe and Joel look at everything, what the ordinance says, what it says, and how to move forward on this.
'Cause we're not even sure at this point who originally had the roads. Because someone had to plat this thing out at some point and put this in. So, we don't even know who originally put those roads in and how it was set up.
We've got pictures.
I don't know how to read this. It may be in there, and I've looked through it. My issue is, why did this just occur within the last two years? I mean, like I said-
What occurred in the last two years?
For forty-seven years, they took care of those roads, and then the last time-
Joe was here five years ago?
Yeah, I was here from fourteen through seventeen. But I was not responsible for the roads, so I don't know if it was being done or not, I can't say.
I can't, I can't answer those questions because I was not here either, none of us were here.
Right, well, no, I'm just-
So I can't say why he got it done, or this-
I'm just saying that it was done, so up until two years ago when that-
All I, I understand, but all I can go of is the information that we have today. So, my, I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion that we have Joe and Joel, and we'll get the information of what we need to do to move forward. Not saying, we just have to get everything ironed out. I'll guarantee you, it's not gonna be done for, the county's not gonna, I, well, I can't, because I'm one person, I can't guarantee anything. The odds of the county just saying, hey, we're going, we've got all this money and we're gonna fix your road for free, because, and it's a private road, that probably won't happen, there will be some expense to the homeowners, because we have to, um, be mindful of all, all that we have to take care of, and there's only so much money to go around, and if we say, you know what, we're gonna take care of your private road, then the next person's gonna come in and want us to take care of their private road, and everybody else is gonna wanna come, well, you took their private road, you need to do my private road. Without me having any guidelines or any structure as to how that is to move forward. We have seven hundred and seventy-one, seventy-seven miles of county road that we are responsible for, and we would love to be able to repave every single mile of it. But that's not gonna happen over a period of probably fifteen years to get, to get that. So, we are very sympathetic and empathetic to you, absolutely. But let us work on something to figure it out. But odds of it just coming under the county and the county, um, burdening the expense, taking on the burden of a hundred percent of the expense to fix it and bring it up to the standard, that more than likely probably won't happen. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Joel or Joel. Okay, uh, we have a cemetery commission appointment. Uh, so the Henry County Cemetery Commission has received notice of Board Member Anne Holmes' retirement, and was a founding board member in two thousand and one, and helped accomplish many projects in the past twenty-one years. Through public notice on the Henry County Cemetery Commission Facebook page, we have received two qualified persons for your consideration as a replacement. The term is one, one twenty-two, twelve thirty-one, twenty, twenty-five. Bylaws are five-year staggered terms. The commission is seeking your appointment to fill this remainder of this term as all board members are appointed by Henry County Commissioners. Our commission strives to continue oversight and assistance in maintaining our Henry County Pioneer Cemeteries. Post-COVID, we're in the process of restructuring our projects and growing our advisory board, which is open to the public to help assist in future projects. We are currently meeting quarterly, sincerely, Donna Tauber. Each commissioner was given the bio for Ellen Shelton and Stacy Dick. They both have expressed interest, um, in serving on this board. Any questions or comments? Nothing from you, Ed. Do I have a motion to appoint one of these two individuals?
I would, uh, both seem qualified. I would make a motion to appoint Ellen Shelton.
I would second that.
Motion by Ed Tarantino, second by Steve Deller, to appoint Ellen Shelton to the Cemetery Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. They are also, like she said in the letter, and I think she has made it, uh, publicized it in the Courier Times, they are looking for volunteers to help with the advisory board and the commission to help clean up the semin- local cemeteries. So anyone interested, um, please contact, uh, Donna Tauber at the Henry County Cemetery Commission. Next, we have Resolution twenty-two-two dash oh-eight dash ten, uh, zero seventeen. It's a resolution regarding the disposition of surplus property. Whereas Henry County, Indiana, has recently determined that it no longer needs three two thousand thirteen Chevrolet Caprice PPV sedans. Do I, I don't need to read the VIN numbers. With the three corresponding VIN numbers, uh, which are, were mostly recently used by Henry County Sheriff's Department as patrol cars. And whereas the town of Mount Summit is in need of vehicles for use by its town marshal and deputy town marshals, and wishes to acquire the vehicles. And whereas Indiana Code five twenty-two, twenty-two, ten permits local governmental units to exchange personal property upon terms evidenced by resolutions adopted by each of the local government, governmental units. And whereas Henry County and Mount Summit have agreed upon the terms for the transfer of the vehicle to Mount Summit for use by its town marshal and deputy town marshals, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Indiana as follows. The vehicle shall be transferred to the town of Mount Summit, Indiana in exchange for the payment of ten thousand dollars to Henry County, Indiana. This resolution shall become effective upon the adoption of a substantially identical, of a substantially identical by the town of, council of town of Mount Summit, Indiana, authorizing the acquisition of the, the vehicles. Rick, did you wanna speak on, anything on that?
No, I understand, Mount Summit, that's the end that you have, that's what you're working on.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two-two eight dash ten to seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Deller, second by Ed Tarantino, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. And finally, we have the juvenile detention center contract. This is a, um, I wanna say temporary, but that's not the word I'm looking for.
A supplement.
A supplement, uh, to the previous. We have, um, unfortunately utilized all of the contracted bed days with the Youth Opportunity Center, and they have agreed, um, tip, in the contract, it was, if we went over bed days, we had to pay extra for any additional beds. They have agreed to keep it at the contracted, uh, price that we had for twenty-twenty-two, but they did want us to enter into a supplemental agreement that will last through the end of the year. Those bed days, we are, um, this contra- temporary or supplemental is for four, I believe, four hundred and eighty bed days at the contracted price of a hundred and thirty versus we would've had to pay a hundred and fifty dollars per bed day. Any questions?
That's a total amount for the rest of your right? Sixty-two-four?
Yes.
Just so the public understands, we have to guess at the beginning of each year how many days that our juveniles will have to be held by the Y O C. And for the last several years, we have had days left over at the end of the year, which we do not necessarily get reimbursed for. This year, we have run over. So that is why we have to take this action now. So-
Yeah, in the, in the con- we were not allowed to roll over, I don't think, last, last year's bed days. And those bed days are based upon an average, which Susan Lightfoot is very good at averaging those out, but there's been several local events involving juveniles that have, um, increased, uh, the number of youth that are being held at the Y O C. So, uh, do I have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Deller, second by Ed Tarantino, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. And I believe that, um, and I for- I'm sorry, Butch, I forgot to ask you if you had anything. I'm so sorry. So, I believe, um, I talked to President Gray, Council President Gray, and he'd asked if we could pay this out of safety lit, and we can. Okay. Just, I'm sorry, Butch, I completely missed you, I apologize. Debbie was blocking you when I looked to my left.
I don't know that anybody ever misses me. This just came up today, actually. But several months ago, I was here, did a presentation about a product and a program that we were trying to implement in the dispatch center. that we were trying to implement in the dispatch center. You saw that, you approved it, we started the process to purchase it from the company, Apco. And of course, they sent us a contract. Contract went to the county attorney. County attorney looked at it, made some changes, went back to them, it's done this a couple times maybe. It's finalized now, Joe can speak to that. And it, we don't, I don't have it with me today, Joel still has it, he's gonna get it to me. I just wanted to bring this to your attention. If you guys can approve the contract based on what Joel tells you, then I can get it over to you and.
Are you?
Yeah, I'm satisfied.
You're satisfied? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the contract for Apco?
Yes.
Is that what it's called? I'm so sorry. I don't, I do remember, but don't remember the name, for dispatch.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve Deller, or second by Ed Tarantino, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. You're welcome. Anybody else have anything? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Patty Broyles, and I was at a school board meeting last Monday. And as you all know, there was a false alarm with the 911. But what a great job that was done, and what a great learning experience. It was a false alarm, but this community was ready. They did mention the commissioners at least twice, maybe more, of paying for this and getting it started, and they awarded the sheriff's department and the city, and they were state policemen, firemen, and I just was.
They all came running.
They all came running, and I just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you, you're welcome. And I will say, and Butch can attest to this, the, when we first, I think I was the first one to install that app here in the county as a test, and I went, Jeff Lutz, Brian True, and I went down to dispatch, and I told Butch, I said, I really kinda wanna test it just to see, you know, you, you know, it's a new toy, you just wanna push the button to see what it's gonna do, and I'm like, but we can't do that. And we were actually having a conversation of, how could we put together to be able to do a test so we don't freak everybody out? And I'm sorry that it, in one way, I'm sorry that it happened, but in another way, it's like, hey, there's our test. You know, I didn't, I don't want anybody to be upset, freaked out, or, you know, that there was an active shooter, but the, and I've heard it throughout the community, the way everybody responded and as quickly, it was, I believe it was, it was a good investment on our part, too.
Yes, it was.
And Derek Bertrand, thank him from the Sheriff's Department for helping lead this, Sheriff McCorkle, and everybody else for jumping on board.
Yes, it was, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Does anybody have anything else? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, thank you, guys.
Second.